President's Board of Education, regular meeting on Monday, July the thirteenth, twenty twenty, at seven oh three P M. Members present are David, Brett, Kenny, Jennifer, and Susie. It's time to move on to the swearing in ceremony of Jennifer Turner.
You just want her to read it, or you want her to report?
Yes. I, Jennifer Turner, hereby declare under oath that I will faithfully perform the duties of member of the Board of Education of Stigler School District, number I twenty of Haskell County, Oklahoma, to the best of my ability, and that I will faithfully discharge all the duties pertaining to said office and obey the Constitution and laws of the United States and Oklahoma.
Okay.
Yes.
Just, just in case?
Just in case.
Yeah.
We just need to sign.
Okay. Who sends as clerk? Can you, can you send it?
Do.
I do notary.
Okay. I was thinking clerk.
Well, it says.
Notary clerk or other office. Okay. Just can't read it.
Okay. At this time, we move on to the approval of the minutes from the June fifteenth, twenty twenty meeting.
Changes or additions?
Second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Brett, to approve the minutes from the June fifteenth, twenty twenty meeting. Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. This time we move on to the approval of encoverances.
Yes, there's very few in the month of June. We can go over them all real quick. The first one is middle school library books.
I will not.
You will not hook up?
No. And then we have the Gabbert Communications, which is our thirty-one hundred dollars, which is our purchasing, our website that we begin with this year. Bioquip is ag supplies. And then we have our O-Sig, that's our liability insurance that we voted on last month. Square Deal Music, I'm kind of humbled to say that was our buying the new cordless mic that we tried to use at graduation.
You got it ripped off.
We, we may want to get a refund.
Yeah, that's.
Well, you fixed the problem, but.
Well, I think I put the old mic back up there, so.
Whatever you did, it worked.
D-Lane is our copier lease that we voted on last month. Child Nutrition. We had two. The first one is our supplies for our summer feeding. And then the second one, in the amount of thirty-eight seventy-five, is stopping to Lindy Hamlin to be child nutrition coordinator for last year. We pay those either in their checks or two installments in December and May, or just one installment in May. And that's what that is, is that single installment for child nutrition. And then other financial reports, we just have what we're carrying over for next year.
Yeah, we, we.
We'll, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, we have to make a, a motion on the.
I make a motion to approve the encoverances.
One second. Motion made by David, seconded by Jennifer to approve the encoverances as listed. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Now we can move on to the financial reports.
Well, I'm jumping ahead. It's a long meeting.
Including right along.
So I have to take a, a motion on those.
We're going to end the year, we just got all those calculations made. We're going to end the year in the general fund with a carryover of two million, one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-two dollars. So pretty healthy. The building fund, we carry over seven hundred and ninety-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-one. And then child nutrition, one hundred and sixty-one thousand, five hundred and twenty for the year. So pretty healthy overall.
Okay. Any comments, questions? Good. Okay, at this time, we move on to public comment. The Board of Education invites public comment at this point in the regular meeting. A, comments concerning agenda items in accordance with policy B E D dash R. No one present for that. And we have a presentation from Ms. April Murray, Commissary Text, Partner School Service Reports. Everybody knows Ms. April, I guess.
Okay, today, today's my first day to present this, so hopefully I can do it pretty accurately. But the vision of our superintendent, which is Ms. Shelley Free, and our deputy superintendent, which is Mr. Doug Hall, was to have success measures across our district and, and show how we're successful. So we've developed, you know, program success measures, which would be like auto welding, you know, that kind of thing. In business and industry success measures, which is our short-term side of our programs, that we offer the quick trainings for like long-term care, you know, even the farm welding, some of those top classes. So what these three different, the backside of all three are the same with these. But the first page, I'll just explain that to you, so you know what it is. We have a marketing person that she's just amazing, and she does a great job putting together information. And when she sent it out to us to proof, I just thought it was really neat, because like this is Stigler, the very top page. And so Stigler campus. So we've got automotive, construction, cosmetology, health careers, practical nursing, welding, and then we have our academics. So anywhere, all the ones that are kind of that tan color different are the ones that are in that program. So like, for instance, we've got sixteen in all of them from Stigler High School. And that's how she kind of related it, so that you could see, you know, how many we had in that program, which I really liked that. And as far as our programs, we have automotive, which we've got Jimmy Bergans, who's been there quite ten years at least. Construction technology, which we hired someone from industry two years ago, and he has like thirty-five years of experience in the field. And he just brings a wealth of knowledge. And we have a tiny house that, that's almost finished, we'll call it for sound public surplus. And so if everyone come look at it, it's really neat, a neat thing to look at. And it's just, inside is just, just really neat how he put the details in it, and the students help do it. Cosmetology, we actually hired someone new, a lady that had taught at Fort Smith at a, at a cosmetology school there, and she lives in Whitefield. So she's came to us, she started July first, so she's going to be working with us, and she brings a lot of experience also. Health careers, we've actually have someone from our area that was teaching our practical nursing at Podo. Her name's Laura Burkhardt, but she has now became our health careers physician. So she's been with the district a couple of years, and, and actually went through our LPM program back when I used to teach here, because I taught, started teaching at the Stigler campus in nineteen ninety-nine. So she, I don't remember what year it was, but shortly after she went through our LPM program, and now she's, she has her V S N. So she's going to be great for the program as well. Practical nursing, we only have ten, and we don't have high school students in that program, it's adult only. So, and there's only ten, because Oklahoma Board of Nursing only had ten per instructor. So that's why there's only ten in there. Of course, welding, Alton Allred, he's probably been there sixteen years. And then academics, Mr. Bailey actually retired from Stigler Public Schools, and he teaches part-time for us. And, you know, we don't have a lot in the math and science, and he just takes care of women, does a great job with that. So that's a little bit about the programs. At the bottom, now this, the numbers are fifty-two, and then on the next page, you'll see our alternative school is six. We have six from Stigler Alternative as well. So the second page, I went ahead and included it, because it's somewhat tied, you know, to Stigler High School. So at the bottom, these are two thousand and eighteen, nineteen numbers. So I know that the public schools report to the State Department of Education. You know, everyone's held accountable by different entities. We're held accountable to the Oklahoma Department of Career Tech. So these numbers down here are actual numbers that every teacher reports on programs, they follow up on all their students, they ask where they're working, you know, the wage that they're making. We just want to see, you know, if they're successful, do they need help, do they need some more training, do they need to come back in? So these are our numbers, and it focuses on completion and retention, who've completed the program, or who are returning. So sometimes you might have a junior come through, they need two years to get that welding down, or automotive. Positive placements, students who get a job, join the military, or they're continuing their education. And then in two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, because that's the last available, a hundred and forty-one certificates received out of that, that group of students. In two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, we had a hundred and forty-six. So that's kind of, you know, where our numbers have been. And then the average wage was fifteen fifty-five. So on the backside, that talks about our business and industry at the top. So we have, what, they've changed the name from Business and Industry Service, Services to Workforce Economic and Development Coordinators. So these are the classes that we held. That's those short-term classes, long-term care nurse, that nurse aid, more for like adults. Sometimes high school will do it, but it's more like adults that want to get in and take this, and then they go to work. Or it could be special interest classes, you know, that we've offered, whether it be yoga, or whether it be farm welding, you know, Mr. Allred has taught some of those classes. And so that's our numbers for that. We had eleven, or eleven hundred and eighty-three short-term enrollments, and then we had one thousand forty-seven clock hours, and then the contact hours. And then at the bottom is just our Business and Education Council that was approved last year. So this September, we'll take a new list of the board, and a lot of them will be the same, you know. And so we have these people on this that come to these meetings twice a year, our advisory board, but we call it Business Education Council. But they, they look at our equipment, they look at our curriculum, they tell us in the industry, okay, maybe you need to get this piece of equipment, because I'm seeing that out in the industry. So that's the purpose of it. So it really gives insight to it. And then a lot of the people that are on these Business and Education Councils hire our students, and they put them to work. And I know Susie's on one of our boards, and David is too. So, and then a lot of them from our programs are people that actually work out in the field. So on all three of these, they will be the same on the back as far as your Business and Education Council. And the very last page that I attached is just Stigler for this year, two thousand and nineteen, twenty. And it just is a breakdown of all the students that we have there, a hundred and forty, and what programs they're in. So I just want to get included that as well. But this is just a partner school service report that we wanted to share.
Thank you.
And so that you've had the information, and then you know some of the things that we're doing. And Commissary Stigler.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Did y'all have any questions for me?
Great partnership.
Yes. We just feel we're an extension of the partner schools. You know, we're there for the students, to help them and get them where they need to be. That's all I have, and thank you for allowing me to be here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome anytime.
Thank you.
I think you've been a little via. I needed the pen. Okay. All right. Information items, Superintendent's report.
A couple of things. First of all, I wanted to kind of put out on the table the need for a special board meeting toward the end of July. We have a lot of policy that we're in the process of writing, i.e., we have on the agenda tonight, if it carries a virtual academy, we've got a lot of policy to write there, our virtual days that we're putting into effect this next year, some other things. We also, in our CARES Act funding, which we received three hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars this year for the next two years, Dr. Kettle's also applied for a supplemental grant. If you, if you spend thirty percent of your CARES Act money in two of six categories, then you could apply for this grant. And we were awarded a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars in that supplemental grant. And those things are all going to be directly tied to distance learning. So we're going to need at that meeting also to get those proceeds approved for spending, to get them in place, so we can get that stuff ordered, to have it here, hopefully by the time school starts or there soon after. So going to kind of toss that out and see if you had, we were looking at maybe the twenty-third of July.
It's a Thursday?
It's a Thursday. I assume at seven. And should be, it'll be a lot quicker meeting than tonight, so.
And wasn't that almost the maximum amount of funds you, funds you could get in that grant?
You could, I think for us, the maximum was two hundred thousand.
So a hundred and ninety-something's pretty close there.
We were very disappointed. We liked that by two thousand. But yes, a hundred and ninety-eight out of a possible two hundred thousand, we were pretty pleased with that.
Can you do that, Jennifer?
I don't know. I probably can. I didn't bring my phone in, or else I could look at my schedule.
I can, as long as it's the evening.
I can.
I should be able to, too.
Just too far out. I mean, we just have to see. You know, we should be able to, but, you know, I don't know what happened.
Yes, we can communicate the first of next week, whatever one's going to see.
Yeah, we can see where we're at, yeah.
Aren't you going on a trip or something?
No.
Is it canceled?
Yeah, yeah, it's canceled.
No trip for you.
Don't worry.
I'm sure you're all right.
It's a Tuesday night.
We have to, uh, forty-eight, uh, Tuesday's a Tuesday.
It's a special Tuesday.
Yeah, Tuesday, five, seven, well, ten, we're standing by ten.
I'd schedule it anyways, because there's going to be at least three of you guys here anyway, so I'm not scheduling.
Or thirty, yeah, thirty.
For that date.
Yeah.
The only way I will be here is if something happens, and I'm stuck south.
As far as I know, I'll be here, yeah, too.
We'll touch base individually Monday, and make sure that we can do that.
As long as we have three.
The only other thing I had is we're, we're moving a double classroom portable from the elementary school to the kindergarten, and that'll give us eight classrooms up here. We're looking at, we're all teetering between needing two, three K, and three right now. If we have three, that leaves us an open, and possibly one of those rooms, we may look, because our technology department's going to have to have a place to stop pile stuff, because we're going one-to-one, and we have a lot of equipment. So quite possibly use one of those rooms for our technology department. But that building should be moved next week, and then we can start getting the electric and water installed, underpinned down, and get that ready for the start of school. So, but that's all I have.
You know, we approved, a month or two back, approved these Chromebooks or something. I know you're talking about distant learning, or remote learning, or whatever. When, when will those, when will we have those, I guess, is my question?
They're here.
Oh, okay, so.
And Dennis Craig's working on getting those ready right now. And then we have, with the Choctaw Nation, we have, I'm going to call it a voucher, the four hundred dollar correct, Jennifer, for school-aged children, that they can, it's a real short application process. They can apply and get a four hundred dollar voucher to purchase distance learning equipment, a Chromebook, Wi-Fi, that kind of thing. So that's a, that's a gift to our district, you know, where a lot of our students are members of that nation.
To all students, or they're just for the?
It'll be Choctaw, members of the Choctaw Nation.
Just Choctaw, or not?
No, it's a Choctaw initiative.
Some kids, a lot, sometimes.
So the ones that the school bought, they'll be checked out, and you check it out, like a library book or whatever?
Correct.
Okay.
And we're, we're still looking at maybe possibly a small user fee, or do we want to look into insuring those? And we're kind of researching all of that right now, because.
This is something we'll go over in a special meeting, though, Greg.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, you'd have to do something, probably, because if you're going to issue those to kids, would the insurers cover loss or damage both?
You can buy different coverages. The ones I've looked at did, you could buy where it covered loss, it would cover different types of damages, and you can get whatever deductible. And just roughly looking at it, I was looking at a twenty-six to twenty-nine dollar per Chromebook, if we insured fourteen hundred brand-new ones, that's kind of what I plugged in. So we were looking at that, or either like a thirty-dollar user fee, and that would help us supplement those repairs. So we're kind of looking at those options right now.
Okay. We'll move on. Action topic A, consideration of types of general fund expenditures to be allowed during the twenty twenty, twenty-one school year.
Any changes?
No, this is pretty standard.
Make a motion to, is that change, uh, use the general fund expenditures allowed during the twenty twenty-one school year? A second. I can't get it to come up, but I've looked at it earlier.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Brett, to accept the types of general fund expenditures to be allowed during the twenty twenty school year. Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic B, consideration of investment proposal.
Okay, this is just from Mike Butler at First National to switch us over from going off the Federal Reserve interest rate to the U.S. Treasury interest rate. And using his guidance, it's just a more consistent rate. You know, he says the Federal Reserve right now is zero.
Yeah, that's right.
And I think this is a little higher. Nothing's very good right now. But he just, with his guidance, he said this is going to be a more consistent rate over the next year for us.
Did we check with C and B, or Farmer's Day, on any?
It's pretty much standard.
Is it the same on all of it? I know, my bank in Fort Smith, if I got, I got thirty thousand dollars in my checking account, I get three percent. So I don't know, that's what I was wondering, if there's anything here in Stigler that's doing that.
They're, they're pretty much standard here in town. If you go to a larger bank, Metzcoke or Fort Smith, you probably would be at Tulsa or someplace like that, but we like to kind of keep it local.
Yeah, three percent, yeah, that's really good.
That's really good.
Actually, you got to maintain, if you go below that any time.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
It doesn't maintain that.
God, I bet you wouldn't draw that on a CD, would you? All right, not in my stuff.
Make a motion if we accept the investment proposal from First National Bank?
I'll second. Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer, to accept the investment proposable, proposal from First National Bank. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic C, consideration of approval of David Morgan, Superintendent to serve as the authorized representative at the Oklahoma State Department of Education Child Nutrition Programs for the twenty twenty-one school year.
This is pretty standard to sign off on child nutrition.
My attachment.
Mine aren't either, why are you just like?
Well, there's mine that just popped up. I make a motion, we made David Morgan, Superintendent to serve as authorized representative of Oklahoma State Department of Education Child Nutrition Programs for the twenty twenty-one school year.
I'll second. Motion made by David, seconded by Jennifer, to allow David Morgan, Superintendent to serve as the authorized representative, representative of the Oklahoma State Board of Education Child Nutrition Programs for the twenty twenty-one school year. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic D, authorization for Superintendent David Morgan to serve as the school board's federal programs legal representative for the twenty twenty-one school year. The federal programs included are as listed. Thank you. Heavens, no. Heavens, no. And hopefully all that will be fixed next, next month. Can we just say, as listed?
Yes.
That'll be fine. Well, actually, look at your recommended motion.
Three D.
Motion. That's what you can say. Okay, that's what, I've done that on every one of the motions.
I think you're two D.
I make a motion to approve Superintendent David Morgan to serve as the school board's federal programs legal representative for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year, as listed.
I'll second.
Motion made by Jennifer, seconded by David, to allow authorized Superintendent David Morgan to serve as the school board's federal programs legal representative for the twenty twenty-one school year. The federal programs included are as listed. Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kenny? And Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
No, you're fine. I was just trying to get it to you, because I knew you were trying to.
No, I was like, about the thickness.
Yeah.
Action topic E, consideration of empowering Superintendent David Morgan to act on behalf of the Stigler Board of Education in the approval of purchases, encoverances of funds, assignments of purchase orders up to ten thousand dollars for original purchases, and change orders up to seven hundred and fifty dollars for the school year twenty twenty-one.
And this is all standard?
District purchase. Designate him as district purchasing officer. Okay, just, this is just a formality.
Want a motion? All right, you go ahead. I make a motion, we empower Superintendent David Morgan as the purchaser, encumbrance of funds, assignment, purchase orders up to ten thousand dollars.
District purchasing officer.
For the original purchase, and charges up to seven hundred and fifty dollars for the school year twenty twenty-one. I second. Sleep at the wheel.
Motion made by David, seconded by Brett, to empower Superintendent David Morgan to act as district purchasing officer, assigned, assignment of purchase orders up to ten thousand dollars for original purchases, and change orders up to seven hundred and fifty dollars for the, for the school year twenty twenty-one. David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic F, consideration auth, authorizing, authorization of the following individuals and their responsibilities for the twenty twenty-one school year, as listed.
Make a motion that we have the authorization of following individuals and their responsibilities associated?
There's no changes. No, I'll say not from motion. Okay. Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer, to allow the following individuals and have, and their responsibilities for the twenty twenty-one school year are as listed. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic G, consideration of designating Tony Gilmore as a district safety coordinator and the school wellness program director for the twenty twenty-one school year. G and H, together. I make a motion that we designate Tony Gilmore as the district safety coordinator and the school wellness program director for the twenty twenty through twenty twenty-one school year.
I'll second.
Motion made by Jennifer, seconded by David, to designate Tony Gilmore as a district safety coordinator and the school wellness program director for the twenty twenty-one school year. Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic I, consideration of authorizing school district treasurer Judy Hamlin to deposit general fund investment, interest investment earnings into the building fund for the twenty twenty-one school year.
Make a motion to give authority to Judy Hamlin to deposit general fund investments for the twenty twenty-one school year.
I'll second. Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer, to authorize school district treasurer Judy Hamlin to deposit general fund interest investment earnings into the building fund for the twenty twenty-one school year. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic J, consideration of approval of the Family Education Rights and Privacy Act, FERPA plan as provided for those through section four hundred, four thirty-eight of Public Law ninety-three dash three eighty.
Make a motion, we approve the FERPA plan as provided through section four thirty-eight of Public Law ninety-three dash three eighty. Is this just adopting a policy? I guess so. Sorry.
Is that what it is?
No.
Okay, well, what does this mean?
The FERPA, explain the FERPA to them, because I don't know exactly how to explain it.
FERPA is going to give parents the rights to see records, adapt records, and access records, that.
But nobody else can call, kind of like HIPAA.
Oh, okay.
Unless given permission by.
So it is kind of a policy, the school's adopting, this is our policy concerning this.
It's a FERPA policy.
But we just have to, we've already adopted it. We just have to. Approve it every year.
Okay, okay, I'm good. Second.
You seconded, Kenny. Motion made by David, seconded by Kenny, to approve the family, the FERPA plan as provided for through section four hundred thirty-eight of Public Law thirty, ninety-three dash three eighty. David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic K, consideration of activity funds accounts and sub-accounts for the twenty twenty-one school year.
Any changes, or any changes?
No, the same, same as last year.
Okay. The, the accountant goes over that, too, right, as far as all this stuff goes, and that's all. Make a motion that we approve the activity fund accounts and sub-accounts for the twenty twenty-one school year.
Second.
Who, David? Motion made by Kenny, seconded by David, to accept the activity fund accounts and sub-accounts for the twenty twenty-one school year. Kenny?
Yes.
David? David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic L, consideration of approval of fundraising activities for the twenty twenty-one school year.
Make a motion to approve fundraising activities for the twenty twenty-one school year.
I'll second. Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer to approve the fundraising activities for the twenty twenty-one school year. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic M, consideration of gas, diesel bids, uh, pricing for the twenty twenty-one school year.
And we had uh, uh, two Hopkins come in at the better bid and then Total was the second bid and we, we don't have another supplier here in town that can handle our buses. And uh, so uh, Hopkins was the best bid.
So we buy that bulk, we buy all of it in bulk? Oh, don't, so they just?
No, we go there.
Oh, okay.
We used to, we used to.
Several years ago, there was a decision made to take the tanks out.
Probably a good idea. You know, Hopkins, they had problems with their tanks, what, last year or something, we had some issues there. Is Total, do we just follow with them as a secondary? Do we need to make that motion that we're doing this, or we just do that automatically?
No, we'll just go with the fuel card to Total or wherever we have that problem.
Make a motion that we use Hopkins propane for gasoline diesel twenty twenty-one school year.
Second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Brett to go um, with Hopkins for our gasoline diesel pricing for the twenty twenty-one school year. Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic N, consideration of milk bids for the twenty twenty-one school year.
And.
May just read them weird if you go.
Yeah, we have Benny Keith, Highland, and Tankersley. Highland has been our provider for quite a while. And it comes in a little higher for, for carton milk, but what they do, we've had good service and also they provide all of our milk boss boxes and do all of the maintenance to those boxes and neither one of the others provides that.
Don't they take the old milk back too, we don't use or something, they take it from?
Yeah, they give us credit for it.
And you sit there. What's the difference between them and the next closest meal?
Uh, between four and five cents.
Okay, so we're not, you're not proposing going with the cheapest, but it's the money provides the best service, is?
Right. They've been on top of things and then we have several milk boxes throughout the district and that's going to price it, we get the gold purchase. And they, what's left over, they take it back. So, what you would, we'd have to dispose of that.
Make a motion that we, Highland Dairy is our milk bid.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer to uh, accept the bids from Highland um, for the twenty twenty-one school year. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action top- uh, consideration of bread bids for the twenty twenty-one school year.
And Brett, uh, if you have those, we have Benny Keith, Bimbo Bakeries, and Tankersley's once again. And uh, Bimbo Bake- Bakeries, it's hard to say, uh, is the lowest bid and has provided good service uh, for some past.
Make a motion that we accept Bimbo breads for the twenty twenty-one school.
Second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by David to um, accept Bimbo breads for the twenty twenty-one school year. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic P, consideration of food bids for the twenty twenty-one school year.
Okay, we've been with Cisco in the past and one of the things about Cisco is they have the state bid. So actually, you're clear, mate, we've talked, if we adjust that a little bit, uh, that's gonna be the one that the state of Oklahoma goes with. They know the quality. And uh, they come in uh, cheaper than SGC, about the same as Benny Keith and you. And so, uh, we recommend that we go with that state bid, uh, Cisco.
And is it the low bid? Sorry.
It's, it is, but, I mean, it is not necessarily, but what we know with Cisco is that we always get name brand products and we know the quality that we're getting. And the state of Oklahoma knows something because all these suppliers come into the state of Oklahoma and they want us, the, the bid for the state.
Do we, do we get something else with this though too, is, I thought there was something. Maybe more, I thought there was Cisco supplied some.
They don't supply anything, but we do get credits. Um, like if they get the food that are cheaper, then they pass those credits on down to us.
Yeah, I thought there was something there. Come later on.
Yes.
And there'll be other items that we'll buy from other suppliers, but if they don't have any, that is a fair role.
Yeah, so like this, okay, like these bids, that's thirty-eight, forty-nine, fifty-eight, what, okay, is, what is that? Is that total or?
It's gonna be the, the total of a, a list that we give them and they fill it out and it's the total, like a can of tomatoes, a macaroni and cheese, at the comparable size.
Oh, so it's everything, all the items and so, and then obviously then the volume will be different.
The problem with Benny Keith is, uh, if you look, if you can see down there, it says Benny Keith has a lot of cafeterias with items that we might not purchase somewhere else due to the toss. Uh, but we've had issues with pricing impacts. So, you know, what they bid is, I would assume versus what we end up getting. So we've had problems with them in the past and problems with, uh, I believe that the brand of food that we get sometimes. So, we're pretty comfortable with Cisco.
Right, and there, there are some things through Cisco, like ham, for instance, that the cafeteria found our kids don't eat that brand of ham really well. So they go up and they get free bids from other vendors before she will let them go to somebody else to buy the different brand of ham, like that may be Benny Keith. So we do use those other vendors periodically, but it's only when our, when it's proven that our kids just won't eat that brand or what Cisco has.
Just wherever you take them off a business, after that.
But it's very rare, very rare that they have to go somewhere else.
Yeah, we're gonna do.
We use Cisco food for our food bids for the twenty twenty-one school year.
I'll second. Motion made by Kenny, seconded by David to um, go with Cisco for our food bids for the twenty twenty-one school year. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic Q, consideration of allowing the school bus to be parked overnight at the homes of Travis Hatfield, Spencer Jameson, Jackie Morris, and Jim Parker for the twenty twenty-one school year.
Make a motion to allow, the list of names to go on our school lists.
I'll second. Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer to allow the school buses to be parked overnight at the homes of Travis Hatfield, Spencer Jameson, Jackie, Jackie Morris, and Jim Parker for the twenty twenty-one school year. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Is that what we're currently doing, I assume?
Yes. Action topic R, consideration of resolution allowing payroll deduction and remittance of insurance premiums for programs offered to employees of this district for the twenty twenty-one school year.
Just saying that we've done that for a few years. Make a motion, we uh, without the resolution, the payroll deduction, the remittance of insurance premiums for programs offered for the twenty twenty-one school year.
I'll second. Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer to allow the resolution for payroll deduction, remittance of insurance premiums for programs offered to employees of this district for the twenty twenty-one school year. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic S, consideration of district employees' four oh three B annuities for the twenty twenty-one school year to comply with IRS rules and oversight by the third-party administrator, ING.
Same as was at that school. Make a motion to use our third-party ING for the district employees' annuities for the twenty twenty-one school year.
Uh, motion made, uh, motion made by Kenny, seconded by David to um, allow ING to um, oversight, be the oversight for the district employees to four oh three B annuities for the twenty twenty-one school year. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic T, consideration of asbestos policy.
Just shows that whatever we have's not harmful to anyone.
Do we have a, uh, who's our direct role? Is that's the same, that's?
It's, um.
That's me, here the asbestos, asbestos.
Oh, yeah, and we have the, that guy that comes in.
That's, you're gonna be the direct role. Make a motion to accept asbestos policy as listed for the twenty twenty-one school.
I'll second. Jennifer? Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer to allow the asbestos policy as listed for the twenty twenty-one school year. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic U, consideration of uniform allowances of a hundred and fifty dollars for all full-time cafeteria personnel for the twenty twenty-one school year.
We've all been doing this before.
That's what, they either bring in receipts or charge, we'll charge, that's what we've done, we've seen.
I make a motion that we approve the uniform allowance for the, for the, for the full-time cafeteria personnel for the twenty twenty-one school.
I'll second.
Motion made by Jennifer, seconded by David to allow um, the cafeteria personnel to, for a uniform allowance of a hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic B, consideration of Stigler parent family engagement policy for the twenty twenty-one school year.
I don't know, I don't have any idea what that is.
That, that's uh, federal programs, that's our Title I and we'd have to have a parent family engagement policy in place. It's the same policy that we had last year. And then it will be more, it'll be uh, more direct down at the site level, there, up there on the site level.
So is this, it, no changes, is what we've just?
No, it is, it's.
Okay.
I make a motion, we approve the uh, Stigler parent family engagement policy for the twenty twenty-one school year.
Motion made by David, seconded by Jennifer to accept the Stigler parent family engagement policy for the twenty twenty-one school year. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic W, consideration of driver's education classes for the twenty twenty-one school year.
And that's, we didn't have a summer class, of course, so we're just pushing that to the fall. We'll have another class in the spring. And we have Tony Gilmore, Ryan Stamper, Chris Rising, Chris Strickland.
Pays the same, correct?
Yes.
Do those guys drive?
Not really.
Make a motion to approve extra duties, I mean, driver's education classes for the twenty twenty-one school year.
I'll second. Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer to accept the driver's education classes for the twenty one, twenty twenty-one school year as listed. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic X, consideration of extra duty stipends for employees for the twenty twenty-one school year.
You can see that we pay thirty dollars gatekeepers, et cetera. We pay a little more for crowd control and flock keeper, that's added responsibility. I don't wanna be a clock keeper.
Is it changing, staying money, same? Uh, are they, is this available to all employees?
Yes, he's, he sends around the calendar at the beginning of the year. Oh, I'm sorry, except first or, and they cannot, they have to be on overtime.
Okay. Make a motion to approve extra duty stipends for employees for the twenty twenty-one school year.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer to accept the extra duty stipends for employees for the twenty twenty-one school year. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Susie, yes.
So, I'm sorry, I interrupted. They, they all have the, all the employees have the same opportunity to do this stuff.
Action topic Y, consideration of substitute teacher rates for the twenty twenty-one school year.
Only difference, we raised certified degrees up to, from sixty-five to seventy dollars. Then, non is still fifty-five.
Is that, is that a state deal or degrees?
No, it's local. Right. They tell me that s- uh, surrounding schools, one of them pays a hundred for the degree, but we don't have a, very few degree substitute teachers for a year degree.
Great. But the degree was given preference, you had the, we had two ones available, how does that work?
We normally don't have to worry about preference.
We, oh, you say, so it's, whatever you sign up.
Big bar with.
Yeah, okay, never mind, that is.
The ones we're used to get preference, cause they uh.
You don't have a lot of demand, they're not beating your door down?
No.
Make a motion to approve substitute teacher rates for the twenty twenty-one school year.
Second. Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer to accept the substitute teacher rate for the twenty twenty-one school year, seventy for certified, fifty-five for non-certified. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic Z, consideration of approval of Commissary Technology Center credits and William Bailey as state certified math instructor for students receiving math credits from KTC for the twenty twenty-one school year.
This is what we've done in the past, they're, they're able to just take those math and they also take science credits and it allows them to stay in those programs. Uh, allows more of our kids to be uh, in those programs at KTC.
Make a motion to approve Commissary Technology Center credits and William Bailey as state certified math instructor for students receiving math credits from Commissary Technology Center for the twenty twenty-one school year.
I'll second. Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer to allow KTC uh, credits and William Bailey as the state certified math instructor for the students receiving math credits from KTC for the twenty twenty-one school year. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic A, A, consideration of perimile days to hours formula for the twenty twenty-one school year calendar.
And this is, this is how we've calculated our school year for the last several years. Not going a hundred and seventy-five days by professional, we go a thousand fifty hours, a thousand eight total. That gives us no flex, but.
Talking to people from Quentin, they're going to, their virtual day on Friday and they're gonna be counting that as part of their hours in the day.
Right.
Instead of like a four-day week, they're gonna go a five-day week, start school in the middle of August and then end early. Somehow in there, so, I guess that's basically what we're gonna be doing this.
And, well, we have the amended calendar proposals, so.
Make a motion to approve the days to hours formula for the twenty twenty-one school year.
I'll second. Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer to approve the days to hours formula for the twenty twenty-one school year. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic A, B, consideration of healthy and fit school advisory committee, safe school committee for the twenty twenty-one school year.
And this is just the list of the committee members that all appear to be on that committee.
Make a motion to approve the healthy and fit school advisory committee, safe school committee for the twenty twenty-one school.
I'll second. Motion made by David, seconded by Jennifer to accept the hea- healthy and fit school advisory committee, safe school committee for the twenty twenty-one school year as listed. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Uh, Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic A, C, consideration of renewal of OKTLE agreement for the twenty twenty-one school year.
This is who we use for our teacher and administrators' evaluations. We have ninety-one uh, instructors for purchasing for and for administrators.
So, say that one more time, sorry.
This is the instrument we use to evaluate our teachers and administrators. So we purchase it per teacher, per person.
Is it like an electronic deal or?
So you, you can do it electronically within the classroom if I'm uh, evaluating a teacher.
I see, but it keeps all the history, you know.
I say it keeps all the history, you know, addressed.
The, the cost is twenty-eight ninety-two point five?
Yes, it's, it's, uh, twenty-four seventy-five per teacher, and then, uh, a hundred and sixty dollars has to look, it's getting small, per administrator.
Make motion to approve to renew that OKTLE agreement for the twenty twenty through twenty twenty one school year. Second. Motion made by Jennifer, seconded by David, to renew, um, with the OKTLE agreement for the twenty twenty one school year. Um, Jennifer? Yes. David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic A, D, consideration of, of authorizing Matt Jones as an activity fund custodian, custodian for the twenty twenty one school year.
He's a new administrator that has not been designated as an activity fund custodian yet, so we need to recruit him for that.
Make motion to approve Matt Jones, his activity fund will be custodian for the twenty twenty one school year. So adding him to the list is a basic, correct? Second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Brett, to authorize Matt Jones as an activity fund custodian for the twenty twenty one school year. Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic A, E, consideration of authorizing designated signers on the First National Bank accounts.
And there's a list of signers, and there're different, uh, duties in, uh.
Make motion to authorize the designated signers on the First National Bank account.
Motion made by David, seconded by Jennifer, to allow the authorized designated signers on the First National Bank accounts as listed. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic A, F, consideration of bids for Hain for the card name for the twenty twenty one school year.
Okay, we've, uh, we've had that letter, we've did, we've had it, we've done twice since the last board meeting, I think we have here, and I think that you've seen.
You know, I could say this the last time, I mean, and I don't know anything about this, is that a reasonable amount? It didn't seem like a lot to me, but I, I have no idea how people, some people may pay by the bail.
Doesn't matter, it's, you can do it by the bail, ten-dollar bail, yes.
It was only being got, right?
Basically, they're just cleaning it.
Yeah, and it was only being got, so it's just like, we just came back from Illinois. Okay.
I think last year, four hundred.
For that, that's.
Right.
Year before that, is he, this is the third year that he's gotten it? 'Cause I remember the first year he got it from River Park, it was five oh one, this bit was five oh one.
Yeah.
I remember that. So, I think that's kind of cheap.
Good deal.
Okay. I make a motion, we accept a bid, uh, for Brian Snow, Hain, and Conner Lamb for the twenty twenty one school year.
Motion made by David, seconded by Jennifer, to allow Brian Snow for three hundred and fifty dollars for the Hain apartment rights on thirty-eight acres of, of the land on Kedney Prairie Road and Hainton Lane intersection, uh, for the twenty twenty one school year. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic A, G, consideration of amended school calendar for the twenty twenty one school year.
And this, here's where we talk about that school calendar, and what, what we're proposing will reduce our, what, main recommendation from the state, one of them was to try to get as much instructional time in before the Christmas break as possible. And, uh, so what we're recommending, number one, is to move up our start date by one week. Uh, I've talked to the principals about having with that days to hours, uh, setting our daily schedule at three hundred and seventy-three minutes. And what that'll do, in essence, will allow for a hundred and sixty-eight instructional days, and then, um, it will also allow us for almost one and a half cushion days built in there, if we needed that at some point, okay? So, also, if you'll notice there in the, I'm gonna say purple colors on September twenty-fifth, uh, the first day of fall break, uh, there in October, and then, uh, the Friday right before, uh, spring break, March the twelfth. What these are, are professional days slash virtual days. It'll allow us to have professional development on those days, but the kids were like, what Kenny was talking about earlier on the Fridays, they'll be on a virtual day. So we'll, if we're having a presenter, we're having presenters on that professional day, we'll allow the teachers thirty minutes between, uh, activities to go check Google Classroom and make sure that no kids need help on the assignment sometimes. And part of that policy will be, you need to check in Google Classroom every hour, hour and a half. We don't want parents saying, well, my son tried to get hold of that teacher for four hours every day, couldn't get hold of him. So those purple, and then we put two all-out virtual days, uh, you can tell me to add on in October, the nineteenth, Monday of fall break, and then Martin Luther King Day on the eighteenth of January, and these will be kind of trial runs for an all-out virtual day, when, uh, no one will be here, but we'll have that same policy for, for a virtual day. Uh, we've got three days out, three Fridays out in April, those green, and then you can see we're getting out on, I believe that's the seventh of May.
The sixth will be the last day for kids.
Yeah, I'm sorry, sixth will be the last day for kids. Then if we have a extended outage, uh, we'll use virtual days, but there may, if we're out three weeks, we may wanna count virtual days per week or two, and then extend a little bit also.
So historically, what, what you're calling virtual days has just been the kids were off and the teachers were going to meetings or training.
Yeah, we, we not had.
In a normal year.
Right, so now it's gonna be, the kids are gonna have, it's gonna be virtual, they're gonna have work to do.
Right. And they'll have interaction possibilities with those teachers through Google Classroom, and Google has a Google Meet now, where that, it's like a Zoom meeting, where they can interact with that teacher on those days, and that'd be what Quentin would be doing on Fridays.
And that'll give you some more cushion in the school year too.
And it kind of gives us some practice in case we have another extended time.
Make motion to accept amended school calendar for the twenty twenty one school year.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Brett, to accept the amended school calendar for the twenty twenty one school year. Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic A, H, consideration of renewed membership with OROS for the twenty twenty one school year.
And that's Organization of Rural Oklahoma Schools, and we actually get a, a discount on our OKTLE, about two hundred and fifty dollars, uh, because we're members of, uh, this organization, and the great part about it, right now, there's a separation with COAL, for example, between urban schools and rural schools, and so, you know, what's good for them's not always good for us. And so, this is our advocate a lot of times for rural schools in Oklahoma.
Advocate capital or?
They lobby, they give us policy, uh, mail those things.
Make a motion to renew the membership with OROS for the twenty twenty one school year.
Motion made by David, seconded by Brett, to renew the membership with the OROS for the twenty twenty one school year. David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
I thought it looked like already was a first, I'm gonna sign me up.
Action topic A, I, consideration of an after-school program for the grade school for the twenty twenty one school year.
I'm gonna pass this out, I'm gonna have this something to look at, 'cause it may not make sense what I'm saying. Uh, but we're proposing, uh, the creation of, uh, law schools in Oklahoma are doing this. We're proposing a, uh, virtual academy for state-owned public schools. Uh, we estimate that we've lost anywhere from fifteen to twenty-five students in the last couple of years to, uh, online platforms such as Epic and K-12. Uh, what this would attempt to do is recover and retain those students. Uh, we have some fear that, you know, people won't be ready to bring their kids back, that's one.
Is this with the after-school program, or is this the next?
This is separate, no, the, the after-school is separate.
Okay, that's what we're gonna do right now.
Oh, that's, my goodness.
I was, I was thinking, wait a minute.
That's why you had that, you look on your face.
'Cause I kept looking at this.
I was going, sixty thousand dollars?
He's going pretty good, but.
Well, wait, it's, we'll wait, Kenny.
It may be more than that, I don't know.
Don't give Kenny one of these. Now, there's a blank. Well, let's go back to that one, let's go to this one, while you're passing those out, after-school program. Uh, we're proposing an after-school program for, we would like to start with Stigler, uh, grade school this year, and it is in hours of operation three fifteen to five thirty. Now, I've tried to be very liberal with our costs for the program, and very conservative with money we're saving, so if it comes out better than that, that's always good. Uh, but we're talking about a maximum of seven instructors, uh, twenty-five dollars an hour is generally the rate paid. Uh, if you'll look at that, number of school days, a hundred and sixty-eight, two-point-two-five hours, twenty-five dollars an hour, that's ninety-four fifty per instructor a year, sixty-six thousand one hundred and fifty. Uh, before school, we're, we're here an hour, that's a cost of, as you can see, uh, it shouldn't be seven instructors over there, it should be one, I'm sorry. That's a cost of forty-two hundred dollars. Uh, I'm putting in there, I think, very little, fixed cost, about nine thousand. Uh, I think it's liberal, and additional materials at ten thousand, I don't think we'd be near that, but that's a total of eighty-nine thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. Now, when we talk about recovered revenue, we're looking at during that of, uh, uh, recovered or additional revenue. Uh, we're gonna offer a third meal option during that after-school program, and we feel like this'll, uh, bring in about sixteen thousand eight hundred dollars, uh, in additional funds. When we talk about that, we funded the child nutrition program at about forty thousand dollars out of the general fund into the, to help fund the child nutrition program this year. If we can make that sixteen thousand eight hundred dollars in child nutrition, we can keep that amount in the general fund to kind of offset this cost.
So this is just kind of an after-school tutoring, is that basically what it is?
It's gonna be after-school, it'll be tutoring, enrichment, PE, and it gives, we feel like it gives us a competitive edge, because we're losing some of those kids, uh, surrounding schools that offer those programs.
How come particularly?
Well, because if you can send them elsewhere, and they can be at that school till five-thirty, or you can send them here, and then they have to go on the bus down to the daycare, and you pay for that service.
It's a childcare issue.
Uh, yeah, and we're gonna provide that time for tutoring and, and other activities also. Um, the other offset in cost is gonna be through savings of tutoring expense, so you can see down at the bottom, bottom, the total, what we're, what I'm estimating is recovered revenue is, uh, thirty-five thousand one hundred and sixty-two dollars. So liberally kind of looking at the cost, we're looking at about a fifty-four thousand dollar cost.
So this is a voluntary type thing, right?
For the.
For this after-school program, it's voluntary, so when you say maximum of seven instructors, obviously you're only gonna give them, you know, if you don't have anybody that volunteers, you're gonna have no instructors, or if you have.
They right now have, uh, they polling, they have about a hundred, a hundred and twenty that are interested in that, and, uh, uh, but what I'm saying on seven, here's what I see, maybe if we can get a, and I've told them, we've gotta be frugal, 'cause this is not a moneymaker, it's a money coster, you know, so, uh, we, I think a lot of times we can have five instructors, and maybe by four fifteen, four thirty, one of them peel out of that, so that cost goes way down, and I think it's gonna come in a lot cheaper than what I have down here, but I don't wanna tell you something that'd be a lot more expensive.
You're doing the cost analysis on this on a monthly basis, weekly basis?
This right here.
Well, when it starts.
Right, we'll, we'll keep a, a tab on it, and we'll have, uh, we're kind of looking at Melanie Carmen, but she's gonna be assistant grade school principal, and she's gonna head this up. And she, I learned real quick, she's good, and she'll help me keep tabs on it, and we will be frugal, and we don't need them there, we'll have them.
Of course, I guess it's all, I mean, I don't know if this is in here or not, but if you don't lose the kids, there's value in not losing students, right? I mean.
Well, to pay for this, if we save that fifty-four thousand, if we, over a two or three-year period, let's say that these three grades coming in the next three years, we recovered three kids in a class, that's basically ten kids, that's fifty thousand right there, and we're paying for it.
And that's probably the bigger picture, right, in my, in my, I mean, I don't.
This is an investment to invest in our financial future, and, and the, uh, you know, we've got these young working families in our community, and it, we were, we were looking at five o'clock, and said, oh, we need to go five-thirty, we need to allow them that time to get here, and so.
What time can we get up at five in the morning?
Uh, an hour, I think we said, yes, no, I think, seven fifteen to eight fifteen.
Seven fifteen to eight fifteen.
And this is K through four?
This'll be K through four, possibly five, but we're really looking at four right now to get off the ground.
Pre-K.
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 I'm sorry. We keep forgetting about the pre-K.
Make motion to approve the after-school program for the grade school for the twenty twenty one school year.
Second. Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer, to approve the after-school program for the grade school for the twenty twenty one school year. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic A, J, consideration of virtual school academy beginning for the twenty twenty one school year.
Okay, I got halfway through this, so, um, on this, we're just, this is a lot of schools in Oklahoma, but we've talked to a lot of different schools that are doing this in very, various ways, and, uh, met with a, a group of teachers twice, we're about the, uh, policy and how this would work, especially at the elementary level, and, uh, just creating a, a Stigler virtual academy to, number one, for those parents that are a little skeptical on bringing those kids back in the short term. In the long term, though, we're, we're forced, if we wanna stay in the business, to compete with the virtual academies out there, Epic, K-12, et cetera. And, uh, so this is our effort to do that, and, uh, what we're proposing, we looked at, could we, could we pay teachers a stipend in their extra hours? But I think what we're proposing is to hire a virtual coordinator slash instructor, and that's kind of designated in here, recovered, once again, revenue. Uh, we would absorb our current alternative ed program that's done in the evenings, uh, we would absorb that into this academy. Uh, you can look there, we estimate next year with a hundred and sixty-eight total instructional days, our alt-ed is only Monday through Thursday, so that's about a hundred and thirty-five days. At twenty-five dollars an hour, four and a half hours a night, that's fifteen thousand one hundred and eighty-seven dollars in savings. So, I, to be honest, I'm putting a real round number out there, I think it's generous, at sixty thousand for a virtual coordinator instruction, it's sixty thousand. So if you take the savings away from that, you're looking at roughly about forty-four thousand eight hundred and thirteen dollars.
This seems real vague to me.
It, well.
As far as the cost goes?
Mm-hmm.
You know, the instructional stuff, I mean, if you have something that's more, um, I guess that's what you want over a special meeting? Is that the sum of it?
Well, this'll be, that would be one policy. Well, this will be, that would be one policy that's in that special board meeting will be, and we've, we've been, like I say, we've had two long meetings with that teacher committee, and just gone, how's this gonna work, you know? And, uh, what.
Virtual teacher, I mean, a virtual teacher, or a retired teacher to do this, or a little bit cheaper?
Well, what we would really like to see, and possibly if there's one out there, but, what do I say, this retired and virtual tend to not always go together. Usually more millennial and virtual, you know, being savvy in technology.
Do we have something now that they're doing? Or not? I thought we had something that we were working on now as a virtual platform.
Well, we, we have, we use edgenuity right now, but if we use it in our alternative ed. And, um, uh, we use that in our alternative ed, our, when kids need credit recovery in high school. But it's really suited secondary. Um, uh, they have a platform that's more suited for elementary K through eight. And so that's what we're looking at, Odysseyware for that platform. And then what we would, what I would love to do is, I hope, if we hire an instructor, is to hire a, a young instructor that maybe even has been involved in one of those virtual academies that exists now. They kind of know the ins and outs already, and they can give us some wise counsel on the whole thing as they come in.
So in addition to the sixty thousand, we will have some additional costs with Odyssey and then, you know, whether you.
No, uh, no, uh, we already purchased edgenuity, I mean, for our other purposes. Um, that's, that is one thing we're gonna come in, into July on that special board meeting. All of that will be purchased through that, through that supplemental grant, that hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. Do we?
Can we go over all this then, or do we need to approve this now?
Well, we, here's the main thing, we'd like to get that instructor in place and have them a part of this development. Is the, if, if we could, but it's gonna put us behind, you know?
Do you know who that is?
No, we, if we, uh, approve this tonight, we would have to start advertising along with that. Now, I know Kenny and I, I know, you know, in dealing with personnel here the last few weeks, I know like, uh, a teacher with, I'm thinking of one that we're looking at tonight, seven years' experience. Our, our salary on them's forty-seven thousand, I'm being pretty generous, pretty liberal on the sixties.
So do we need to give you the approval to extend an offer to someone with this, or?
We'll have a, an item in here to, to give authority to extend contracts, any necessary, you know, positions within the class. This would be.
We'll have to go with that, I mean, that's coming up though.
Right.
We'll talk about that.
Is it, is the overall objective of this, is, I mean, is it basically to, for, so Stigler's school system doesn't lose students? Is that ultimately the goal?
Correct. And you have a, you have an increasing number of families that they're choosing virtual platforms as a way to, just used to like you said, homeschool, and you had homeschool organizations. Now they're using, uh, these virtual schools that are coming up, the ones that we mentioned, they're receiving our state funding to fund their school.
And so that, that's really the objective, cause I guess I'm looking at, like, well, there's already something out there that provides this service. Then why don't we let them provide it, again, save the forty-four thousand, you know what I mean? But, but in the big scheme of things, where we're not spending, I mean, we're hoping to save more than.
Just in casual conversation, uh, on, uh, at our senior breakfast, I was talking to a lady. And, uh, she asked me about this, where did she run? Uh, she asked me about this, and I said, yeah, I mean, that's what we're looking at. She said, her, her child is on, is with that program. And she said, he'll be back. But he's a, he's a six or eight thousand dollar kid financially. Well, it doesn't take, and I just talked to two more, uh, today, that would go to that platform. So it's not gonna take long, kind of like the after-school program, it's an investment that I think will.
That's gonna pay back, and then ultimately that, so these costs are, if you really look at the big picture, this is, it's gonna make, hopefully a moneymaker, not a coster.
When I look at it, I get a little bit of sweat sometimes, but, you know, but it's an investment.
Wait, I was just wondering what is gonna be enough, that's what I'm kinda worried about, is that.
What our plan? You mean one instructor? What our plan is, if, if we come in, and they're gonna start out with, I'm gonna say twelve or fifteen alternative ed students returning from last year. Uh, and I told them, if we go and instruct them, they're gonna have to take that on initially. Now, if we get, and we've had, uh, when our elementary teachers polled, they, they've had a lot of communication. And when they polled, they said, I think Ms. Mayhall said every teacher but one had at least one student, well, that's twenty-something kids. If you get, this instructor has twenty-five pre-K through eight, then we can come in possibly and hire one of our former alt-ed instructors. And pay them a small stipend to oversee that, uh, maybe the edgenuity for high school. Or if they get the thirty-five down here, we'll hire one of our current elementary students, offer extra time to come in and stuff. So, that's kind of our ideas at this point.
And these are basically annual commitments, right, and then what do we vote on this as, as an annual?
Uh, we would, uh, we would be hiring this person on a temporary contract. Uh, cause they, they would have to understand, uh, this thing, but hopefully we would have an elementary position that we could say, hey, we got this position, we wouldn't want this, you know? So, um, but, you know, it would be, it would be similar to what we were talking about with the after-school. We'd have to analyze this monthly and make sure it's going the, the right way. But, uh, once again, we just think it's an investment in our future setup of schools, and.
Yeah, yeah, I guess, well, and of course, of course, I hope, and I, I think it's a good idea, uh, but if it's, you get, you approve some of this, and it just doesn't work out the way you planned it, I guess I'm asking what the exit strategy is.
We don't beat it, Dad, but, you know, if it's dead, we get off and we go, we find what works, you know, I guess with that, you know? We would, we would get off of it, but I think it's the, I think it's here to stay first, but I, I think.
And it's all new to all of us, I mean, to, to every district pretty much, I mean, as far as, you know, with what all's happened in the past year, you know? Or there's a lot of other schools are probably going to do the same thing, it's, I watched it on the news today, that they were talking about, you know, but there is.
Every, every school you talk to, and some of them are offering a traditional, a virtual, and a blended.
Blended.
We're really not going the blended route right now, that gives me headaches, but, uh, this is kind of our version of.
So I think you missed out with, I think you missed out on a lot of it going virtual, completely.
Right, and what we offer them that, that's a good point, what we offer them that those others don't is activities.
That's a big deal.
And it, jokingly, the lady I talked to, she's, I said something about, I said the same things in his, it wasn't football, baseball, or what, it was prom. And I said, well, that makes it a prom, but that's not the same, you know, and I understand that, sometimes it's prom, you know?
Well, it's disappointing, I mean, looking back, I think, to, that, that, that's where you got the epics, is the activities.
Right.
And it's.
And that's one thing, you know, when you talk, we've got, uh, Tony, Ms. Billmore is, uh, looking into all that OSSAA and how they're gonna come down on just exactly eligibility and that kind of thing. So we've kind of spread this out and given responsibility to various people.
Will he be, whoever you hire in this position, will they be, uh, working directly for you or for the high school principal? Will that be just, how will that be?
No, cause it's a district, you know, cause they'll have elementary, middle, and high schools, so they.
They'll be directing.
Right, and that was, uh, a question we talked about, and they'll have to work with the, the principals. Just like, uh, Ms. Bush that does our special ed, she has all levels, and they'll have to do the same thing, but they'll, they'll be here.
Make a motion to approve virtual school academy beginning twenty twenty-one school year.
Second, question made by Kenny, second by Jennifer, to accept the virtual school academy beginning twenty twenty-one school year. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer, yes. Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Yes.
Action topic H A K A, I thought you could. Consideration of ministerial alliance beginning with the school board meetings, uh, with the flags, lute, and prayer.
And that's, uh, that's recommending that we have, and I talked to Jason Smith about the possibility of ministerial alliance doing this. And, uh, making sure that they all knew the pledge before they come in. And, uh, but if they would be willing to come in and lead, and get into this meeting, lead, uh, in the pledge, and, and fire before we begin.
I personally like the idea of it.
Sure.
So I guess I'll make the motion that we, that the ministerial alliance begin school board meetings with the flags, lute, and prayer.
Second. Jennifer, one. Question made by Brett, second by Jennifer, to accept the ministerial alliance beginning the school board meetings with the flags, lute, and prayer. Uh, Brett?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Okay, this time we move on to executive session. Eight, propose executive session to discuss and act upon the following business pursuant to twenty-five Oklahoma statute. Three oh seven B one and two of the open meeting. Number one, discussion of three-year contract for David Morgan Superintendent beginning in twenty twenty-one school year. Number two, discussion of certified, non-certified personnel's salary and fringe benefit package for the twenty twenty-one school year. Number three, discussion of COVID-nineteen support personnel stipends. Number four, discussion of continued employment or non-reemployment of ten grade teacher for the twenty twenty-one school year. Number five, discussion to employ Cook for the twenty twenty-one school year. Number six, discussion to employ teachers assistant, teacher assistants for the twenty twenty-one school year. Number seven, discussion to employ a speech pathologist for the twenty twenty-one school year. Number eight, discussion to employ bus drivers for the twenty twenty-one school year. Number nine, discussion to employ a Stigler High School band color guard sponsor for the twenty twenty-one school year. Number ten, discussion to employ an IT administrator for the twenty twenty-one school year. Number eleven, discussion of authorizing superintendent David Morgan to s, to accept and resign, any resignation or extend employment for any open positions for the twenty twenty-one school year. None needed.
Make a motion to convene executive session.
I'll second. Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer at eight twenty-seven P M, to convene an executive session. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
That was three.
Make a motion that we return to open session. Second.
Second.
Motion made by Jennifer, seconded by Kenny, to return the board to open session at nine ten P M. Uh, members present during executive session were David Huggins, Brett Form, Kenny Whetson, Jennifer Turner, Susan White. Uh, superintendent, uh, David Morgan was also present, no votes were made, nor votes were taken, no motions were made, nor, nor votes were taken.
I make a motion to approve the three-year contract for David Morgan Superintendent beginning twenty twenty-one school year.
I'll second. Motion made by David, seconded by Jennifer, to accept the three-year contract for David Morgan Superintendent beginning twenty twenty-one school year. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Uh, Kenny?
No.
Um, Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Um, certified, non-certified? I'll make a motion that we approve the certified, non-certified personnel's salary and fringe benefit package for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. Second.
My second.
Motion made by Jennifer, seconded by David, to accept the certified, non-certified personnel's salary and fringe benefit package for the twenty point, twenty twenty-one school year. Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. I make a motion that we approve the COVID-nineteen support personnel stipends.
Second.
Motion made by Jennifer, seconded by David, to, um, accept the COVID-nineteen support personnel stipends. Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
I make a motion to non-reemploy temporary teacher Robin Beauchamp for the twenty twenty-one school year.
I'll second. Motion made by David, seconded by Jennifer, to not reemploy temporary teacher Robin Beauchamp for the twenty twenty-one school year. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Uh, Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Oops. I make a motion that we extend an employment offer to, um, Kendra Powell for the middle school and Kathy Hatfield for the grade school for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, twenty-one school year.
Second.
Motion made by Jennifer, seconded by David, to extend the contract to, uh, Kendra Powell, middle school cook, and Kathy Hatfield, grade school cook. Um, Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Uh, Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Make a motion to apply, employ Tina Denny as special education teacher assistant for the twenty twenty-one school year.
Second. Motion made by David, seconded by Jennifer, to, uh, employ Tina Denny for teacher's assistant for the twenty twenty-one school year. Um, David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Make a motion to employ Kathy Dobie, Katie Dobie for a speech path, twenty twenty-one school year.
Second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by David, to employ Katie Dobie for peach, speech pathologist for the twenty twenty-one school year. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Make a motion to hire Danny Caldwell, bus driver, for the twenty twenty-one school year.
I'll second. Motion made by David, seconded by Jennifer, to employ Danny Caldwell, bus driver for the twenty twenty-one school year. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. I make a motion that we employ Brandy Saki for the Stigler High School band color guard sponsor for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year.
Make an extra duty stipend, is that right?
Is that what, an extra, an extra duty? Or just a, just.
It is an extra duty stipend.
Like, that's why our contracts exist.
Okay, my second.
Motion made by Jennifer, seconded by David, to employ Brandy Saki, um, as, uh, Stigler High School band color guard sponsor for the twenty twenty-one school year. Um, Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Make a motion to hire Michael Huggins for IT administrator.
I'll second. Motion made by. Uh, you need to read that motion like it is, on the regular motion.
It is, it's a contingency on.
Oh, where's the?
There's a contingency on it.
Where's the recommended motion?
On, on the IT?
Mm-hmm. Where.
And that is the.
Employee IT administrator.
Click on it.
Oh, so I can't look at it?
At the bottom it tells you, recommended motion.
Contingent on being released from his current contract.
Oh, can I?
Let's see that.
On an exempt contract, his IT administrator continued upon being released from his current contract for the twenty twenty-one school year.
I don't know that either. Okay, let's see here.
Maybe.
Kenny and then Jennifer, right? Okay.
Looks like it.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer, to employ IT adminis, uh, Mike Huggins as IT administrator for the twenty twenty-one school year with contingent upon being released from his current contract for the twenty twenty-one school year. Uh, Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Make a motion to authorize superintendent David Morgan to accept any resignations or extend employment for any positions and virtual administrator for the twenty twenty-one school year.
My second. Motion made by David, seconded by Jennifer, to authorize superintendent David Morgan to accept any resignations and extend employment for any open positions for the twenty twenty-one school year. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. And Susie, yes. Okay, let's see, this time I move on, action topics, um, election of school board officers, president, vice president, clerk, and deputy clerk. As it is now, president, David, vice president, you're deputy clerk or clerk?
Just clerk.
John was deputy clerk.
Correct.
Yeah, and Jennifer was a member, and so, okay.
Kansas State member.
I am too, I, I'm, I'm the new guy, I'm supposed to be the.
Well, you, you need to do something, cause we don't have a, we don't have a deputy clerk.
We have to have a deputy.
Yes.
Okay, I'll be deputy clerk.
Okay.
Okay, I need a, a motion and to list each, each position, yeah, from somebody.
Make a motion that uh, the school board officers listed will be president Susan White, vice president David Huggins, clerk Kenneth Whitson, uh, deputy clerk Jennifer Turner, and member Brett Orm.
Yeah, your time's coming, honey, trust me.
I'll second.
Brett. Motion made by Kenny, thank you Kenny. President, um, election of school board officers are as follows, president Susan White, vice president David Huggins, clerk Kenny Whitson, deputy clerk Jennifer Turner, and member Brett Orm. Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes, any new business?
No new business.
No new business.
Motion to adjourn, second. I'll meet you there.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by David at nine eighteen PM to adjourn, uh, Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes, next regular meeting is August the tenth, twenty twenty.
We don't have to call you man of president.